This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2015, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 6th, 2015, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The fire exits are to my right and to my left. Speak into the microphones, please, if you come up to talk. Assistive listening devices are available. Rebecca, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Broommetler.
Here.
Councilman Erickson.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Potts.
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shamir.
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak.
Here.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held September 2nd, 2014, September 16th, 2014, October 21st, 2014, December 2nd, 2014, and December 16th, 2014, and the special meeting held September 23rd, 2014, as distributed?
Motion. Second.
Is that an all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, there's two abstentions.
I abstained.
I saw that. And two voters. Does that...
I was out at two of those meetings, so I was...
Well, you could abstain on those, and then we could adopt the others. You were here for the other meetings?
Yes. Now I gotta figure out which days they are, if you can hold on a second.
Because of, you know, number of votes that we need.
Right. Well, you could table them until we do have a full council.
I would move to table them.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Moving to table that vote on the minutes. Okay. I have a proclamation to read today. Every March, the county reaches out to municipalities in order to ask for their support for Youth Art Month. And it's an annual national observance and emphasizes the value of art education for all children. And I'm pleased to say that our schools will be participating in the county's Youth Art Month. They are invited to participate at the Middlesex County College from March 15th to March 21st. And there will be a reception for the artists on March 21st at 12 o'clock at the third-floor gallery for those interested in attending. Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students, including the following: Art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities; Art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities; Art education gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs; Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects; Art education interrelates students' learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics; And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education, and therefore be it resolved, that support should be given to art teachers as they attempt to strengthen art education in their schools and communities, now therefore it is proclaimed that March be observed as Youth Art Month. All citizens are urged to take interest and give all full support to quality school and art programs for children and youth. And therefore I, Gail Broommetler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim that March 2015 be observed as Youth Art Month in the Borough of Highland Park, and all citizens are urged to take interest in and give full support to quality school arts programs for children and youth. In witness hereof, I signed this proclamation. I think this is very much consistent with what we all feel is an important part of our municipality. I also would like you to know that the students at the Bartle School will be producing an art mural, which will be on display in my office. Thank you. Council reports.
Madam Mayor, may I interrupt for a point of order?
Yes.
Due to a variety of circumstances, we've been unable to have the Main Street Minute for the last couple of meetings. Ms. Hurst is available tonight for Main Street, and prior to council reports with your permission on the agenda, could we have the Main Street Minute since we have been missing them? And I know that she's been a bit under the weather at times, so I'd like to, with your permission, could we have a Main Street Minute and then excuse her?
Yes, I'd be delighted to hear what Main Street has been up to.
Thank you, Mayor.
Glad to see you being over on the side here. Is this on? Do I need to even use...
You have to speak into it.
Oh. Hello? Hello? Okay. I don't want to get my germs on it. Okay, a few things. Thank you for having me. Sorry I couldn't make the last meeting. We have a few new businesses in town. We have a new Turkish restaurant. I don't know if you... The Bridge Cafe.
It's really good. It's excellent, by the way.
It's what?
Excellent.
It's really, it's really good.
Yeah.
I'm not just saying that because I'm paid to say that. It's really good. Yeah, I highly recommend it. I think they'll do well. I was there on the Saturday after they opened, and it was packed. Ackerman Healthcare Supply is a new business in town. I know a lot of people have been wondering about the barbecue place at 418 Raritan, sort of next to Stop &amp; Shop. People have been wondering what's going on with them. They had some problems with their financing, and they've been delayed and delayed and delayed. They're finally on track to open up fairly soon, I hope. It's going to now be a salads, french fries, and burgers and sandwiches place. So, we'll see what happens. We have an Ethiopian restaurant interested in coming to town at 427 Raritan, next to Ackerman Healthcare Supply where Speak Music used to be. So we're working with them. They are having some issues with, they don't have enough parking spaces for the business, but we're trying to help them find alternative parking spaces around town that can, they can submit as being part of their parking plan. So hopefully Ethiopian, I think, would do really well here. A couple of dates to remember, so we're working on our 2015 calendar. It's going to be all up on our website in the next week. Few key dates to remember is, well, also, all of our meetings, our committee meetings are also going to be listed on our website. That wasn't, that hasn't been the case in the past. All of our meetings will now be off-site in ADA-compliant locations, and they will be listed in advance on our website. I just got back from the Promotions Committee meeting, which was at Pinos, which is handicapped accessible, and also more fun than the office, anyway. So that's about the committee meetings and board meetings. Other big events that we should save the date for are the 5K and the Street Fair, which is Sunday, May 3rd, Spring Planting Days, May 14th and 16th, the Outdoor Movie Theater. We have eight movies planned, two for May, two July, two June, two July, two August. That starts on Saturday, May 16th. Friday, June 5th is the first day of the farmer's market. Sunday, September 20th is Arts in the Park. Saturday, November 28th is Small Business Saturday and the tree lighting. Wednesday, November 18th is the Main Street Annual Public Board Meeting, and Wednesday, December 16th is the Main Street Community Holiday Party. Couple of things, we have slightly tweaked the 5K route. We have set up the registration already. People can sign up online. We're seeking runners and, of course, and sponsors. So we did change the 5K route a little bit so that the start line and the finish line are close together, which makes it much easier on our volunteers who don't have to sprint back and forth with cash boxes and boxes of T-shirts. It was, I don't know how we've done that in the past, but, so, it's going to be, it's going to be a little easier to navigate. We got the new course measured, and it was certified by the United States Track and Field Association. Couple other small things, we finished our strategic planning process, and we now have a draft strategic plan with, that I can send around to everyone, and we will also post on our website. There's a lot of good recommendations in there for, you know, things that we can do better, based on the community-wide survey, and also based on some big meetings that we had over the past few months with key stakeholders in town. So I think some good things came out of that. That's pretty much it for now. Well, we, so we just received our Middlesex County grant for the Arts Festival this year. We got about $500 more than we've gotten in previous years, so that's, that's nice. And, that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mayor.
Actually, Rebecca, I have a question. You have a kids' run before the 5K?
So, the kids' run, yes. So the 5K is at 9:00 a.m., and the kids' run is at 10:00 at the track. So it's at the finish line.
Oh.
It's at the high school track, yeah. So it's at the finish line. So after, you know, the main runners, you know, it doesn't usually take most people more than an hour to run a 5K. And then at 10:00 is the kids' races.
Right.
Which is where they run, they run around the track, and they get T-shirts. And we're doing that in partnership with the Yellow Brick Road Preschool. The owner, Sandy, her son is a manager at the comic book store, so he gets free comic books for all the kids who participate.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, they're encouraged to dress up like superheroes. It's called the Kids' Superhero Races.
That's great.
It's really cute. Last year we had more, we did the same thing last year for the first time. And last year we had more kids run than we, you know, have ever had before. We ran out of T-shirts. It was great. So the kids really liked it.
I hope you'll send us some photos to put in our E! News.
Definitely, definitely. Some photos, yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay. Let's get to those council reports. Councilman George.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for accommodating Main Street. Just briefly, the sidewalk task force mayor that you started, we did have our working session. Now that we have all our factual research is now done, we've gotten, and as you know, there's an interface with the planting of shade trees. All our information is in, unfortunately due to the weather and the conflicts that the weather caused and some unavailability of public employees, those meetings were scheduled for last week. They have been adjourned, we're rescheduling them, but we hope to have report for that committee either at the end of February or available for the first March meeting for mayor and council review.
Very good.
Redevelopment is having a working session at their regular Thursday meeting to go over the refinements to the redevelopment plan and for the recommendations before the mayor and council on the 17th. As I understand it, the parking study that was done by one of the departments at Rutgers under the auspices of Dr. Andrews, who sits on the redevelopment committee, they'll be introducing the results of that parking study at this meeting as well. So I'd encourage everyone to come out to the meeting, watch the borough in process with the nuts and bolts of the redevelopment plan. The reorganization of the zoning board adjustment was rescheduled because of weather. It's now on for the 23rd of this month. Reorganization followed by the regular business meeting. I again encourage everyone to come to the planning board and zoning board meetings and really see how the ordinances are actually applied on the nuts-and-bolts basis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Welkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Earlier today, the mayor and I were at a very interesting presentation at Orchard Gardens with the CEO and other members of PSCNG, and, of course, Michael Zucker from Orchard Gardens. They did, they just completed an amazing project with the help of PSCNG. It was a nearly $1.3 million upgrade of energy efficiency infrastructure, so to say, new boilers, new in-wall air conditionings, better insulation. Anything else? It was a wonderful project, and PSCNG was able to offer it through their residential multifamily housing program. And they, they gave a very low-interest loan, which is paid back over time, and it's a great project, and we hope to, we ourselves hope to be working with PSCNG should they get more funding for similar types of projects. And, a couple of announcements, please. Last year, the borough generously donated property to Habitat for Humanity, and we're still been working on it. We finalized the contract of sale, and I'd like to announce that in February we'll be hosting a couple of sessions in town for applicants that are interested in taking on the volunteer work necessary to actually own and live in the house. We'll be having two sessions at our rec center, one on Tuesday, February 17th, from 6:30 to 8:00, and another one on Saturday, Feb. 21st, from 10:00 to 11:30 in the morning, both again at our rec center. There'll be question and answer period, and you can also ask questions privately. Again, anybody who wants to apply, they will have to volunteer their time and effort to help build the house, and they must be of a certain income, and they must be working, and there are various other stipulations. And the deadline for the applications is March 16th, and we expect to have a groundbreaking in April. So stay tuned, we'll be giving out more information on that.
Just one second.
Yes.
Can you make sure you get that information to our communications team?
Absolutely.
One of whom is here tonight. And let's get that up on Facebook.
Thanks. And, tonight we're going to pass a resolution for a, to partner with Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership. The entirety of Highland Park resides in this watershed, and this resolution enforces our initiatives for clean community and environmental awareness, and we'll be partnering with them and other federal and state agencies and nonprofits. And also, on February 7th, that's Saturday, at 7:00 p.m., the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership will be hosting a benefit concert, and that's been coordinated by the Reform Church. It'll be there on South Second Avenue, so come for the, come for the good music, the Pete Seeger music. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce that the Teen Advisory Committee will be having their meeting this coming Thursday at 7:30 at the Senior Youth Center, and they are working on trying to plan some activities for the late winter, early spring season. Also, for our seniors, our monthly senior luncheon for February is going to be on Friday, February 20th, at 12:00 noon at the Senior Youth Center, and the highlighted session or luncheon is the Chinese New Year celebration as the focus for that February luncheon. And just, I reminded everyone, or spoke about it at the last council meeting, about the free tax assistance that's available through the Department of Community Services. So because everyone's probably getting their W-2s and 1099s, it's that time of the year for taxes. It's a program, it's available as free tax assistance if you made less than $60,000 in the year 2014. And this is not just seniors, this is for any residents in Highland Park. If you made less than $60,000, you're eligible for this free assistance. It is going to be required that you schedule an appointment, and you can do that through our Department of Community Services. Let me give you their phone number. The person you would speak to is Janet, and her phone number is 732-819-0052. These free sessions are available on Monday and Wednesday, starting this week that started, and they're available from 9:30 to 2:00, and those appointments are at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center. And again, it's not just for seniors, it's for any residents who have made less than $60,000 in the year 2014. This tax assistance comes not as any expense to the residents through taxes in any way, it's a free tax assistance provided actually by the United Way. So, just want to make that announcement again this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. The reorganization of the Highland Park Library Board of Trustees was rescheduled due to snow, and it will now be held on Monday evening, February 23rd, at the library. The Board of Health is sponsoring an Affordable Care Act enrollment event on February 10th from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Highland Park Library, where there will be certified application counselors and/or navigators available to help you sign up. To avoid penalties, registration for insurance under the Affordable Care Act must be completed by February 15th, and for more information, residents may visit the healthcare.gov website or email acahlandpark@gmail.com. I'm glad to report that the Commission on Universal Access has decided to purchase 10 radios to distribute to Highland Park residents using the commission's trust fund. Also, the Commission on Universal Access is sponsoring an adaptive yoga class available to anyone with a disability or special need. This relaxing and healthy exercise class will be held on five Tuesdays, February 10th, February 17th, and March 3rd, 10th, and 17th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And registration forms for the adaptive yoga class may be found at the borough's website at www.hpborough.com or at the Senior Youth Center. Finally, I'd like, I'd just like to take a moment to remember a former longtime borough resident, Steve Hart, who sadly passed away on January 20th at the age of 56. Mr. Hart, a former longtime borough resident and author, was the owner of the former Highland Park bookstore, Nighthawk Books, and the former publisher of the online newspaper, the Highland Park Monitor. Mr. Hart also gave several readings and talks to the Highland Park Public Library, and as liaison to the library's board of trustees, I want to encourage all residents to visit the Highland Park Library to view the Highland Park Artists Collective's February art exhibit that is titled Reflections, which is being dedicated to Steve Hart. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fine. All right. Borough Administrator, do you have a report? No report, Mayor. Okay. Borough Attorney?
And no report, Madam Mayor.
All right. I also have no report for this evening. Councilwoman Welkowitz and I did a great job talking about the event we went to today about the Orchard Gardens. Highland Park was New Jersey's first green community, and we encourage any private enterprise that decides to become more green. Public discussion. Anybody? Come up to the microphone, please. And when you get there, just state your name and address.
My name is George Stafford. I'm a part of the Edge of Year.
Sure.
I'm with the New Jersey Highlands Coalition, and I've actually been here before. A while back, I've had some changes on your council. I think I was here a little bit more than a year ago. We are asking communities that receive water from the Highlands, and that is not to say that you buy water from somebody in the Highlands. That's where the water you end up with actually hits the ground or bubbles up out of the ground. State Department of Environmental Protection says that you get up to 25% of your water from Highland sources, that is to say, the Raritan Valley, any number of places, and that we're not dealing with aquiferial water. That's a little bit harder to trace. But we've, and I asked you in the past to consider and pass a resolution of support for the Highlands Act, and it's become more critical recently because this little number here, the Regional Master Plan for the Highlands, this was done in 2008, the law requires that it be updated every six years. So they have begun the process of updating this, and there are forces in the Highlands and groups in the Highlands that object to some of the restrictions in the Highlands. One of the things they want to do is to change the nitrate dilution standards in some areas. Now, that's a pretty unsavory thought, really, but basically all it means is the more waste they put in the ground through septic systems, et cetera, the more the people who receive water, like your community, have to pay to get that out before they take it. And it's not necessarily a good thing, and it certainly doesn't point in the right direction that we want to go considering water in the state. One of the other things, a reason to support the Highlands and support the Original Highlands Act is what the resolution asked for, is because going forward, aside from conservation, the only place that new water is going to come from in the northern part of the state of New Jersey is from Highland sources. Groundwater sources are pretty tapped out. As a matter of fact, there are any number of communities within the Highlands themselves that are in a water deficit situation. That is to say, they're using more than they already have. So we want to encourage people to be looking to do more to preserve the watersheds that we have, rather than find ways to tweak the rules so that, you know, we can get a little development, there's discussion about ratables and homeowner, property owner rights. There've been two lawsuits about restrictions in the Highlands actually being a taking of property, and those, both of those lawsuits have failed. So we're asking you that public comment on this ends at the end of this month, in February. We had asked that the public comment be extended so that we could have an Eastern New Jersey and a Central New Jersey meeting with the Highlands Council, representatives of the staff and the people who are redoing this, to meet with the communities that receive the water. The council refused, and all of that outreach that's going on is going on within the Highlands. So, we're reaching out to the 244 communities that receive water from the Highlands. Almost 63% of the people in the state of New Jersey, over 5 million, receive some or all of their water from Highland sources. So I had asked you in the past, I know a lot of things go on, I get a lot of these requests, but to consider our resolution. I have copies of it here for you, and I'll send an email copy to your administrator. But we think it's very important. We've had 72 freeholder boards, environmental commissions, and communities pass this. We've got about 20 in the pipeline, but between the snow and the end of the year and then, you know, reorganization meetings, so that's where we are now, and we would really hope, considering the environmental reputation your community has, and it's well-known, you know, how environmentally conscious your governing body and the town has been, that you join this. I'll also send you a list of the towns and counties that have signed up. And one other thing I have to apologize, I went to a meeting dressed like this because it was informal, meant to go home and change. Somebody cracked up a tractor trailer on Route 80, and I couldn't get back to my sport coat and my dockers, so...
Well, that's okay. We'll accept you like that.
I appreciate that. So I won't take any more of your time.
So let me just ask you to do this. Council President Susan Welkowitz is the borough's liaison to our environmental agencies, and I think it probably makes sense for you two to connect.
Sure.
I know we're looking into the Raritan watershed situation now, but Susan, if you wouldn't mind...
All my contact information is on the resolution itself, so I'll leave that with you.
Okay. And she'll take it up with our environmental people?
Yes, and you can give me an email, and then we can...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that. And I'll leave you this, if there's a door that you want to hold open here in the town, I can use this for a doorstop.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could give her a copy of the resolution, that would be helpful, too.
Yes. I have actually seven copies.
I didn't realize we could get our water from the Highlands.
What part of it, he's saying?
Yeah.
What I'll do is, and I didn't get a chance to go home and pull it out of my computer, but DEP has a website, a little source of water for your community to tell you where you get it. You might be getting it from American water, and I, normally when I appear...
We get it from the Raritan, I think we get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. From like the Highlands, don't we?
Yeah. Well, the Raritan River drains almost 50% of the Highlands, so...
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming by. Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's move on. Clerk, would you report on advertising amendment to police off-duty ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title? consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amended the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 64, concerning rates of pay for off-duty police officers, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Is there, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing? Seeing none? May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holkovitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising the salary ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, just for recording purposes, Madam Deputy Clerk, could you pull the microphone down?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park, and the method of payment of such compensation, was duly advertised for consideration of final, of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Seeing none? May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holkovitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on the introduction of the bond ordinance roof improvements for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance Providing for Roof Improvements, buying in the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $280,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $266,000 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of final, of passage on first reading by title, and the supplemental debt statement prepared by the Finance Director was filed in the Clerk's office on February 3rd, 2015.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holkovitz?
Okay. Clerk, would you report on introduction of the Bond Ordinance for Property Acquisition for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title?
An ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance Providing for the Acquisition of an Approximate 4.176 Acre Track of Land Designated as Block 47, Lots 27 through 75 on the official Highland Park tax map, buying in the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,860,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,767,000 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title, and the supplemental debt statement prepared by the Finance Director was filed in the Clerk's office on February 3rd, 2015.
May I have a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the following story, following items? Resolution to approve the bills list, resolution to approve taxi operator license, resolution to approve pay estimate number 27, H&amp;S Construction and Mechanical Incorporated, public safety building improvements, resolution to approve 2015 tree planting project, resolution to award 2015-2016 mean, water mean and/or sanitary repairs contract, resolution authorizing stipulation of settlement tax appeal, Joseph Rack LLC by Luke Oil North America LLC versus Highland Park, resolution supporting in concept the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, resolution to approve budget transfers, resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations, resolution opposing expansion of Hatik Fak Charter School, resolution authorizing execution of research agreement between the Borough of Highland Park and Rutgers University, resolution declaring Highland Park's intent to fully comply with the current and future Mount Laurel obligations, and to serve as the catalyst for change to render any Mount Laurel lawsuits an unnecessary litigation, resolution authorizing refund for overpayment of water and sewer bill, 245 South Adelaide Avenue, resolution to approve pay estimate number three, 2013 Residential Curb and Sidewalk Reconstruction Program, Marius Concrete and Paving Company, resolution to amend annual salary resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call? Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holkovitz?
Yes.
I am appointing the following: Eleanor Peterson, Dan Jacobs, and John Wentz to the Human Relations Commission, Diane Ray to Employee Safety Committee. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call vote. Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holkovitz?
Yes.
Okay. Any public discussion? Matt?
I don't have anything planned, but my name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. I just wanted to congratulate the appointees to the Human Relations Commission, and I don't know two of them, but I do know Eleanor Peterson, and I've worked with her in a civic capacity on another task force, and she's a terrific addition to, to that commission, which is trying very, very hard to rebuild and grow and do a lot of important work in town, so, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
Motion.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.